To order at 6:04 PM. Okay. I'm going to ask our city clerk, Dana Williams Hunter, to please do the invocation, and our city treasurer to please do the pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone arriving here safely. We pray for our staff, residents, city council, and leadership. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So yeah, we just, we want to recognize our veterans that are here. If you guys could please stand. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for your service. Ladies and gentlemen, of course. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present.
Let's take a look at this agenda. It looks like it's going to be a pretty short agenda if we let it be, right? So. But I think, yeah, we've got some very important things on here. It almost seems like it's been a while since we had the last meeting, at least for myself. So a lot of familiar faces that are visiting us and people who are regular here. And of course, there's people like online and through cable that are watching right now. So they're watching everything we do up here. So thank you for your involvement in the city's affairs. I'm going to take one of our presentations, item four, out of order, so we will begin with councilmember Montero's presentation on Black History Month. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As you know, in February, we celebrate the Black History Month, and my goal is to highlight one of the own people right here in the city of Hawthorne. And I have the honor to present you, Mr. James Swain. Can you come to the floor? And thank you for being here, and you're one of my heroes. So I'm going to read this, and please be with me because it's a little bit lengthy, but it's worthy to know who is this man in front of us has accomplished. So James's life story is one of the incredible achievement and remarkable person. He was born in 1970 in Austin, Texas, but later moved to Los Angeles where he attended the San Bernad High School in Playa del Rey. There, he excelled in academic and sport, particularly in football and track and field. After graduating in 1988, he played football for a year at the Ventura College before enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. And during his time in the boot camp, James distinguished himself in training and received several awards, including the Platoon Honored Man, Honor Graduate, Leatherneck Award, and the Physical Fitness Award. He served as the military police for eight years and received two Good Conduct Award, several letters of appreciation, and the National Defense Medal during Desert Storm. And after being honorably discharged in 1991, James returned to his hometown and pursued his passion for sport and coaching. He started his coaching career where he plays, career began at the San Bernad High School where he worked with several outstanding athletes. James's students went to receive Division One scholarships in football, basketball, and track and field. During his time, he also returned to the community college and earned an AA degree in liberal arts at West Los Angeles College. He later transferred to Cal State Dominguez Hill where he earned a bachelor's degree in sociology in 1998 and a California Social Study credential in 2000. In 2017, he completed his master's degree in administration of education from Concord University of Irvine. And James was a successful coach who won a state championship in basketball. He was also the first black head coach for football and track and field in Hawthorne history and set the national record in the girls' 400 meter in 1997. And in 2010, James joined Hawthorne American Legion Post 314 and has since served as a chaplain, boys' state chairman, and currently serves as a commander. James's story is a testament of the power of perseverance and work and determination. Despite facing many challenges to his journey, he remained committed to serve his country, community, and student. His story is an inspiration to all of us. The Hawthorne City Council formally recognize and take great pride in acknowledging James Swain for his outstanding legacy. His dedication and hard work inspire all of us to make a positive impact in our community. This date of 27th, day of February 2024. So before we give you this, you have the podium, my friend.
Well, I have a coaching voice, not a microphone voice, but I'll get it done. And as our mayor knows, loyal sons and daughters, St. Bernard's who graduated from the same high school, he was actually there when I started coaching, so small world. And but just called the service, like I tell my kids, I teach U.S. and world history at Hawthorne High School, and I tell them we need to know and be really aware of what's going on in our environment, in our communities especially. So I try to make sure that we dedicate ourselves and educate our youth and teach them about service when they come down and service at the American Legion. And I just love this community, so giving seems second nature. And I coached, you know, starting out young, I was rah rah rah, and now I do it, I do it for the kids, so you know, just to see the return. And that's all I have to say, and I don't want to keep you guys up too long, but I really appreciate you and everyone. And I appreciate, and I thank our city for being safe and servicing our community and our kids.
Alex, any words? Any word?
I have to say that, that was very impressive story. I mean, it's, obviously you have a track record of excellence, and we definitely appreciate you staying part of the community of Hawthorne and making us look good. And of course, we thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, I want to congratulate you, you know, on your successes. There was so much I learned about you because I got to know you once I was involved in the city politics, and you came up to me, hey, man, you know, I went to St. Bernard High School too, you know, so, oh, yeah, all right. And then you went to school with my cousins at St. Bernard, and at St. Rayfield.
St. Rayfield.
Yeah, so but the thing is that I started hearing your name and seeing how you were involved in the, at Hawthorne High and the different things at the American Legion. I mean, look, it's, there's not a lot of role models. There are role models, of course, but you know, you're a stellar role model for the kids at the high school, you know? Somebody to look up to, somebody to aspire to, somebody that's kind, knows how to communicate, knows how to express themselves, knows how to, you know, discipline, you know, in a respectful manner. And you're definitely bringing the kids, the children of our community kind of online and the right track and, you know, aspiring to do great things, not only in sports, but, you know? We know sports, a healthy mind is a, a healthy body yields a healthy mind, so, man, you've been doing a lot, and I really admire you, and I'm really excited and happy that I got to know you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swain. Congratulations on your extraordinary legacy. Obviously, you are leaving one behind, but more importantly, you fulfilled a whole lot just to be proud of, especially to your generation and more importantly, those kids that you taught, right?
Yes.
And it's a beautiful thing to be honored and more importantly, being honored while you're here, right?
Yes.
More importantly. But I just want to acknowledge your efforts and more importantly, your service to the United States and all of us that at the end of the day, it's an extraordinary story. And I am, I'm reading as I go along, and it just keeps going on and on and on, but that's just a good thing. Again, congratulations and kudos to you and all your efforts in your life.
Thank you, thank you.
Just hit it. You're good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Congratulations!
Thank you.
Woo! I, my husband is a veteran too, so I have a warm place in my heart for veterans, so I appreciate the work that you've done and moving forward, the work you'll continue to do. I echo my colleagues and like Angie said, you're getting your flowers today, so yay!
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
And Coach, I want to tell you, you know, I admire you so much. You have done so much for this community, and we have gone a long, long way, almost 25 years, so thank you for that blessing. But I want you to go on the Hawthorne website at the Veterans Commission. There is an application there.
Yes.
For us to put veterans on Hawthorne Boulevard. So I want you to submit an application with a picture, and don't worry about the fees because I'll cover it for you. So I want you to be in one of our posters that's going to be on Hawthorne Boulevard during the memorial day weekend, okay? So it's going to be staying there for about three months. So I want you to be one of our, you know, veterans leader. And like I said, you have done so much for this country, so much for Hawthorne, because we go a long way, you know, doing hip relay for life, tracking fields, VFW post, the fireworks stands, so it's so much things to accomplish, and especially, you know, for you to be a mentor for youths, young childrens, that has to be pride to make sure that they on the right track. So for the do, we're going to give you this proclamation, so I want you to step right here in the front of us, and we're going to take a picture. Come on, guys. And, Mr. Mayor, can I have all the VFW posts, 14, to stand up for me, please? All the former commanders, we got two of them over there. Oh, my friend, no, no, stand up too, yeah, because you guys all came to support the coach. Those from the post 314, right down Prairie on Jim Thorpe Park. Thank you, Boston, for coming, Mr. Brown. Thank you, I appreciate all of you for coming in. Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, they were supposed to.
Okay, so all of you don't leave yet? I don't think they were anticipating the picture part. I don't know, maybe they're.
Nice, thank you, Alex.
You know what? I think they have, they're taking care of the voting system.
Kewana Bowie, if you could come up to talk about the community services, it's new senior center, you're going to talk about the design, so.
Woo! Pokewana.
Yeah.
Yay!
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The Community Services Department seeks your approval on the final design of the new Hawthorne Senior Center. The city of Hawthorne secured $5.5 million in specified grant funds from Assemblywoman Tina McKinnon's office for this project and the community center. The design includes upgrades such as dance room, art studio, pottery room, an outdoor patio area, and much, much more. We conducted a community engagement meeting with the Hawthorne seniors to share their planned improvements, and they were very satisfied with the design. Now, I would like to introduce Rania Alomar from Rada Architectural Firm to present the final design for the Hawthorne Senior Center.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here, and thank you, Kewana, for introducing her. I just want to highlight it again that this money came through Assemblywoman Tina McKinnon's office, and without her help, we wouldn't have been able to do this, so we want to give her a round of applause first.
Good, good evening, everyone. So, you know, we're starting with an image of the overall view of the senior center addition as viewed from the south, which is from the big memorial park. So I'm going to kind of just take you through how we got to where we are and just kind of a quick summary of the building. We looked at initially when we came to city council, we looked at existing conditions, the reasons why the existing senior center needs work, things like low daylighting levels, inadequate space, inefficient lighting and energy systems, not ADA, and so on. And we looked at, or we identified all of the opportunities that the site affords us, and some of the main things that we noticed was that we're right at the edge of this great park, and we have the opportunity to really engage the park both physically and really capture the views of the park. So as we started to study how the building could be expanded to accommodate the new program that is sorely needed, we started to look at, you know, how to expand the existing structure. So the key elements that we wanted to integrate were things like daylighting, green space, accessibility, comfort, and flexibility in all the spaces, so that this is a building that lasts for the future and doesn't just accommodate our needs right now. There's some images here showing some materials and usable courtyards and views over green spaces, some of the program elements that Kewana mentioned, such as activities rooms, conference space, cafeteria space, dance hall, you know, making the existing billiards room much better, the computer, expanded computer room. And then looking at the overall site, the, our property is at the northeast corner of the memorial park, and looking at expanding the building up and outward so that it's really capturing the views, and then also really pulling the park into the building, so creating internal courtyards, bringing daylighting in deep into the existing building. And, and so, you know, this is about really kind of hugging that north edge of the park and creating, really articulating that edge and making that a great space to be, not just for the seniors, but also for people that walk through the park, so that there's a space there where you can stop and sit and really kind of activating that edge. You can see here, there's pickleball courts, there's bocce ball, and there's a community garden, and then providing access both from the north parking lot and the east parking lot that they're using right now, and also from the south parking lot. So the building can really be accessed from all sides. So this is kind of a view of the, of the lower level, and you can see, outlined in pink is the existing building. To the right, you can see sort of the, all, the existing building we're going to renovate will bring in, you know, LED lighting, new efficient mechanical systems, will bring in a courtyard that captures the vertical circulation to take you upstairs and really make that, you know, filled with light and air, and really bring sunlight and views into all the rooms. And then the upper level, and I'll go through the plans in a little bit more detail, but you get, you get the idea from this, the upper level has a big deck that overlooks the park, that also functions as a pre-function space to those, to that multipurpose room that's up there. So we're adding a second multipurpose room that is similar in size to the one that's existing downstairs, and providing all these views down into the courtyard spaces, views across the park, really making it a great place to be. So there again outlined, so this is the ground floor plan, so outlined in pink to the right, that's the existing floor plate. So what we're doing here is adding courtyards and adding the space to the left, which is the dance studio and a sewing and flex room. You can see the spaces to the right will get renovated and, you know, pulling in again courtyards, renovating the commercial kitchen that's already there. And then this is upstairs, and you get a sense here of, there's the big multipurpose room to the left, but also there's a pottery or art studio at the north edge, and really kind of activating the in-between spaces, creating lounge spaces that can be used as library or just a place to sit and play chess or backgammon. It's, it's social space, really integrating that into the floor plate of the building. So you're not just going from one thing to the next thing, but you can really, the seniors can really enjoy the building, and really kind of activating that patio on the south edge, bringing greenery in, tables and chairs, and, and, you know, making that a great place to be. So then, then, you know, this is kind of an overview of everything, but the images at the bottom start to show some of the research and the ideas we started bringing in, we're thinking about how do we connect to the existing, and actually in one of our early meetings with the, with the team here, how do we connect to the existing building? How do we bring in some of that brick material that is, is really kind of showing up in all of the city buildings on this campus, and still make the building feel light and airy and, and, and kind of like glowing at the edge of the park, this sort of lantern at the edge of the park? So this is an image of one of the interior courtyards, so, you know, taking that circulation that is taking you upstairs and really making a space out of that, there's greenery in there, there's, there's, you know, a place where people can sit, and there isn't any sort of programmed, programmed event necessarily in there, or there is, this, you know, space for small groups to meet. And the space on the right here, that's the existing multipurpose room with the existing structure all remaining in place and being renovated and upgraded to modern standards. And then you get a sense of the outdoor courtyard, so you've got the dance room to the left and the main lobby to the right, and then kind of creating this outdoor space that can connect to all of the interior spaces. So there's, there's access from this central courtyard space to the, to the dance hall, to the sewing room, and also to the billiards room to the right and to the main lobby. So again, another space that can just really be enjoyed by the public. And then, and then back to this original view, which is as you approach the building, you see the lobby right in front of you, above you is, is the patio. At the top left, where the building arches and kind of peaks, is the big multipurpose room, and then at the bottom is the dance hall and the sewing room further in. And again, sort of landscaping that, that front edge and just really making that a lovely place to be. And that's it.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Hello?
So I was just noticing that the city of Hawthorne, the name is so far back. I think I prefer.
and then also really pulling the park into the building, so creating internal courtyards, bringing daylighting in deep into the existing building. And so, you know, this is about really kind of hugging that north edge of the park and creating, really articulating that edge and making that a great space to be, not just for the seniors, but also for people that walk through the park, so that there's a space there where you can stop and sit and really kind of activating that edge. You can see here, there's pickleball courts, there's bocce ball, and there's a community garden, and then providing access both from the north parking lot and the east parking lot that they're using right now, and also from the south parking lot, so the building can really be accessed from all sides. So, this is kind of a view of the lower level, and you can see, outlined in pink is the existing building. To the right, you can see sort of the existing building we're going to renovate. We'll bring in, you know, LED lighting, new efficient mechanical systems. We'll bring in a courtyard that captures the vertical circulation to take you upstairs and really make that, you know, filled with light and air, and really bring sunlight and views into all the rooms. And then the upper level, and I'll go through the plans in a little bit more detail, but you get the idea from this. The upper level has a big deck that overlooks the park, that also functions as a pre-function space to that multipurpose room that's up there. So, we're adding a second multipurpose room that is similar in size to the one that's existing downstairs, and providing all these views down into the courtyard spaces, views across the park, really making it a great place to be. So, there again outlined, so this is the ground floor plan, so outlined in pink to the right, that's the existing floor plate. So, what we're doing here is adding courtyards and adding the space to the left, which is the dance studio and a sewing and flex room. You can see the spaces to the right will all get renovated, and, you know, pulling in again courtyards, renovating the commercial kitchen that's already there. And then this is upstairs, and you get a sense here of, there's the big multipurpose room to the left, but also there's a pottery or art studio at the north edge, and really kind of activating the in-between spaces, creating lounge spaces that can be used as library or just a place to sit and play chess or backgammon. It's social space, really integrating that into the floor plate of the building. So, you're not just going from one thing to the next thing, but you can really, the seniors can really enjoy the building, and really kind of activating that patio on the south edge, bringing greenery in, tables and chairs, and, you know, making that a great place to be. So, then, you know, this is kind of an overview of everything, but the images at the bottom start to show some of the research and the ideas we started bringing in. We're thinking about how do we connect to the existing, and actually in one of our early meetings with the team here, how do we connect to the existing building? How do we bring in some of that brick material that is really kind of showing up in all of the city buildings on this campus? And still make the building feel light and airy and kind of like glowing at the edge of the park, this sort of lantern at the edge of the park. So, this is an image of one of the interior courtyards, so, you know, taking that circulation that is taking you upstairs and really making a space out of that. There's greenery in there, there's, you know, a place where people can sit, and there isn't any sort of programmed event necessarily in there. Or there is, there's, you know, space for small groups to meet. And the space on the right here, that's the existing multipurpose room with the existing structure all remaining in place and being renovated and upgraded to modern standards. And then you get a sense of the outdoor courtyard. So, you've got the dance room to the left and the main lobby to the right, and then kind of creating this outdoor space that can connect to all of the interior spaces. So, there's access from this central courtyard space to the dance hall, to the sewing room, and also to the billiards room to the right, and to the main lobby. So, again, another space that can just really be enjoyed by the public. And then, back to this original view, which is as you approach the building, you see the lobby right in front of you. Above you is the patio. At the top left, where the building arches and kind of peaks, is the big multipurpose room. And then at the bottom is the dance hall and the sewing room further in. And again, sort of landscaping that front edge and just really making that a lovely place to be. And that's it.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Hello?
So, I was just noticing that the City of Hawthorne, the name is so far back. I think I prefer it to be called front.
Okay.
And then, I don't know what this is called. The front interior, it's see-through?
Like a mesh?
Is it mesh?
Yeah.
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 I don't care for that. Why did you go with the mesh?
Um, I think the building still needs to be transparent in some sense, and, you know, we want people to see in, but not completely see everything that's going on in there. And it was a way of bringing color into the facade that sort of goes with the brick that's existing there. So, we want it to be a light building.
Yeah, I would like to see some other choices in the front.
Is that it?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
To the chair, yeah. Well, first off, I want to say I think the whole design is gorgeous. I like the two levels that you're gonna, you know, give the facility, expanding the pool room, which I haven't been in a while, but I used to go out there and shoot some pool with some of the people there, and I know they're gonna appreciate that. And the courtyard in the inside, kind of bringing in the light from outside into the inside, I think it's really cool. I wish I can, let me see if I can have this. Do I have it?
Yeah, that's it.
There's one page in particular I wanted to... Could you bring it to a page where you can kind of see the building from the street? Is there a page like that? You can kind of see where it sits amongst the whole campus and...
I think this, or maybe actually this.
Got it. So, and so I do like the visibility that the new facade has, where currently you really don't kind of know where the senior center is and really how to kind of get to it. And so I like the fact that you're providing some additional access, right? Some visibility from the front and access from the back as well. You know, as we know, the memorial center is kind of old, right? We have a lot of that brick. So, definitely want to make sure that the senior center is nice, and it's a nice addition, but also kind of blends. So, I mean, I understand your comment about that red mesh thing, right, to blend with the brick. And so I don't really have any specific feedback on designs. It's not my area expertise, I'm not a design person, but definitely want to make sure that it doesn't make the rest of the facility or the rest of the campus look bad, because it's so nice, if that makes sense. But, you know, kind of blend in. Because it's gonna put a lot of pressure on us, we gotta redo everything else next. But that's all. Thank you.
To the chair. Oh, go ahead. Thank you for the presentation. I know the last time that you were here, looking back at the same slide that's on there now, I had some questions with regards to the back of the senior center and some of the activity that's currently taking place there, which is an eyesore. And more importantly, it's kind of discouraging to encourage seniors to come to the senior center when they're obviously having to navigate all these cars that are parked back there and some of the things that are going on there. And I had asked if some point we could maybe put a secured gate of some sort to divert some of that activity, maybe to go towards to the park, so that you actually be in the park, having, you know, card games and those things. I'm not against that. What I'm saying is, just like Councilmember Patterson said, at some point, we didn't even know that's the senior center there, right? If folks are visiting and they're not sure where the senior center's at, they're probably gonna drive, you know, constantly just trying to find a signage or something that directs them to the right place. So, I would like to still see how we could implement, and that might be something that needs to be discussed with our city manager and engineering and our Public Works Division, how we could maybe inquire some type of a gate. Not a full gate, but maybe an arm of some sort that has the abilities to allow it to open for activities and at some point close it for security purposes. But I'm still interested in that. I like the concept of both the upstairs, downstairs, and just the, how large it looks and how large it's going to be. Some of the greenery and the green space around it is good. The, I don't know what you call the park views, is that, that's the second floor, right? That says park views, and then up above, the two yellow-orange, that's the second level, right?
Uh, yeah, the yellow is the new building in that image that you're looking at, and the orange is the existing building.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so obviously we're keeping the existing building and renovating it, and then the yellow is what we're adding.
Yeah, and then I would just, maybe for, again, for our engineering and Public Works and divisions to look at maybe a signage at some point on Prairie in the entrance there where the courts are at to show that this is the actual entrance to access the senior center. So, those are just some of my observations, but it's been a long time coming. I think our seniors are very excited, and at the end of the day, so deserving. There's so much that could be improved there, and it's been a long time coming. So, thank you so much for your presentation.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. Actually, to tell you the truth, it is a beautiful design. Because if you go, any of us that have been gone to the senior center, this is almost like 360-degree improvement, that it is beautiful. And you were here before, and my thing is, you came back with recommendation that we gave you the last time, and I see the excess of visibility from Alsteguna Boulevard all the way up to the back of the senior center. I love the fact, you know, we're gonna have pickleball, you know, bocce ball, all the greenery, the second floor with all these activity rooms. To me, I would approve this plan the way it is, because we gave you some suggestion the last time, and then you guys have come back to us with the improvement suggestion add to the design. I have to tell you that I'm very impressed, because this is a 21st century senior center building that we see in some other cities that is much very, you know, well, you know, cities like Beverly Hills or even buildings in Europe that I have visited, you know? So, I have to congratulate you and the staff and the community service, because I think this is a building that we have been lunched for, we've been wanted for so long, and finally is here, and the seniors have said yes, they like it. So, I think we need to move forward. We cannot stop this progress, and I'm gonna make a motion for us to move forward with this design. Thank you.
Oh, there's, you cannot take a vote based on what's on the agenda here, it's just the presentation.
You're right, because I think I've tried to make a motion to move forward last time, so I don't know. I guess we're all interested, right? We're all interested in it, right?
So, if we have a consensus, we can bring this item back as an agenda item to be approved.
Oh, because I heard we're supposed to get approval tonight, that's what I heard. So, maybe I misunderstood.
So, you could direct the staff to bring it back as an agenda item for action, then you could take an action on it.
But that's my directive, please.
I'll go ahead and request that the item be back on the agenda for our next council meeting.
Do we have concurrence?
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for being here.
Thank you, thank you all.
This is pretty good.
Thank you. Fantastic job.
There's a lot of change, good positive changes happening here in the City of Hawthorne, so thank you. All right. City Manager Vaughn Norris will introduce our next presentation on a new city maintenance and park yard. Yay!
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. I want to give a brief summary of the presentation that you're gonna view. Staff was asked to evaluate the current site, current condition of the city yard located at 12501 Turo Avenue. The current site was built 68 years ago. It's very old, outdated, equipment constantly breaks. In addition, it would be very expensive to retrofit the current building. Staff is proposing a new city yard that will be safer, that would have new equipment, and be a morale booster for our staff. The new building will decrease maintenance costs and meet the updates of the seismic and environmental standards. It will also allow for the future growth of our team, serving as a better parking lot, office, and larger storage areas. The proposed city yard will not disrupt the current operations as staff can remain at the current location until it's built. The funds for this project will be 100% through grants. And at this time, I'd like to bring Rada back up to go over the presentation of the Public Works Yard and Recreation Yard. Thank you.
Thank you, hello again. So, you know, we've looked a little bit at the current site issues. There's, you know, the current site, you can see it right here, it's the city yards, is adjacent to the parks yard. And there's no room for expansion on this site, and it's, you know, there's a lot of things that they're missing that they need on this site, like limited storage capacity, inadequate parking. So, the proposed site is actually the same campus as the senior center, but over to the east side, just north of the sports center. So, it's outlined here in pink, and the front of the site is access from Doty Avenue, but there is access all the way through, so that makes it very convenient for cars and trucks to travel through that site. It's currently an underused lot, so, you know, it seems like an ideal space for this expansion or this new building. So, we did work with the city streets department and the parks department, and we laid out all of the, you know, we took kind of the wish list, and we took the existing, what they have, and we pulled everything together into one site. There are also real advantages to grouping the two divisions together. They can share space, they can share trash, they can share material storage, they have their hazardous materials storage all to code. And so in this overall site plan, the gray areas are covered areas but open underneath, and then the orange is the one single building that is on the site. So, this is kind of an overview of that entire site. So, we put our face to the street and, you know, give kind of a city facade, and, you know, this whole area is secured and used for city and parks. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
To the...
Yes, go ahead, sorry, I jumped too early.
Okay, to the chair. I'm viewing the visuals of the presentation, and that one in particular, it doesn't say FedEx on it, but yeah, it's FedEx.
Yes.
FedEx, right?
Yeah.
So, looking at that slide and then going back to look at the site benefits in pink outline there, yeah. I would assume on the street of Doty Avenue where the property line is at, towards, at the Doty Avenue...
Yes.
...area where those vehicles are parked. Do we have an idea how many vehicles parked there today? Is there an idea? Is it, I'm assuming it's just residential, I'm counting right now, one, two, three, four cars. But it would be condensed, it looks like, on the FedEx picture.
Do you mean on the street in front of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's space maybe along that front edge, maybe of, there's maybe five or six spaces.
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna, there's gonna be a break, so there could be an entrance, there could be an entrance for the vehicles. I just want to make sure that we have, you know, safe turning points, because some of these trucks can be pretty big, some of our vehicles, including those that were picking up bulky items.
Yes.
Having to do bulky item pickup and that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure that we have a good sense of space so that we could accommodate our vehicles as they're needed every day to come in and out of that.
No, you're absolutely right, and those are the kinds of things we're working on right now.
Okay, okay, yeah. Other than that, I am excited for the yard. Again, it's one of those long time coming. I know that I wanted this actually a year ago or so, but I think the sooner the better. Our workforce would be, you know, the champions at the end of the day in getting a yard of their, for their use, and more importantly, safety and everything else. So, yeah, I'm excited for it. And then, one other question would be the existing yard location, where it gives the location address, and then it says current site issues. And then you have the description in pink again, city yard and then parks and yard. Is that gonna be, I'm assuming that's gonna be parking for the parking and yard? Parks and yard parking, I'm assuming?
Is this the current location that we're looking at?
Yeah, you're looking at it now, that where it says parks and yard in pink off to the right, my right?
Yes, you're correct.
Who's gonna...
And the question is, I'm sorry, I...
Who's utilizing that, all the park, all of our new yard?
Currently, as you look at the image, city yard, Public Works, that's their division, and to the right, that's the Recreation Division. So, the new site will be condensed, joining services together to provide better service to the community.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
To the chair.
Yes. So, I just want to just confirm, the new proposed site will be right on the other side of the dog park?
Yes.
That's a good way to kind of imagine it.
Yeah.
And it looks like you guys have a design wheel where it kind of looks separate from everything else, which is great. Mr. City Manager, could you, just for Public's benefit, kind of remind us, what are the activities that happen at the city yard and, you know, the old site that we're bringing over to the new site?
Oh, absolutely. As you see in the picture, and we'll start with Public Works Yard, we do have a lot of dumping in our city that I'm proud to say that we clean up daily. So, dumping items are brought to the yard for disposal. We do wash down our vehicles. We do oil changes, we have an auto center there. So, we do a wide arrangement of vehicle repair, maintenance to our vehicles, and maintenance to the city. Our bucket trucks are there, our equipment, tractors, our trailers are housed at that location.
And with the construction of the new facility, the old facility won't be needed, the old property?
No, that would be up to the City Council to provide direction to myself on how they'd like to move forward with the vacant property.
Right, I definitely want to commend you for finding a solution for this. You know, as you already stated, that the old facility is inadequate, so I'm happy to, you know, find a solution that doesn't cost the city any money, it sounds like, to solve the problem. So, thanks a lot.
Once again, no money will be spent from the general fund. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you again for your presentation, and I have to say thank you, Vaughn, thank you, Public Works, thank you, the Community Division, Parks and Recs, because I don't want to take credit, but I told Vaughn, look at the east side towards the Dory, because there is a lot of space there. And I said, since FedEx and Costco's on the other side toward north, it was, makes sense, was to combine everything together, right? And Parks and Recs and the Public Works Yard, because right now, you know, we're right here on Turo, very dense populated residential area, and that facility there has grown, and it's time for them to move out. So, I definitely support this, and thank you again for the, it looks pretty well designed, and I think will accommodate all the needs of our Public Works Yards, and it's about time for them to have a new facility, because, like I said, if you go to the yard... the yard, you know, the conditions there is horrible. So, so thank you, and I hope we can move forward with this ASAP. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Scott Rafferty is next with the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir.
My name's Scott Rafferty, and I'm here to present this evening on the possibility of submitting a charter proposal to the, to the voters. I, I'm a lawyer. I have politics degrees from Princeton and, and Oxford, and I specialize in voting rights and utility regulation. And during the Obama administration, I was deputy director at the administrative procedure, at, at the administrative conference, which tries to find ways to make the federal government more efficient and fair to its citizens. So, these are all subjects that tend to put people to sleep. So, I'm going to try to be a little more lively about this topic, and, and I think it does have some, it's something you should take a serious look at. In a way, when we talk about a city charter, we're looking at a constitution for your city. And constitutions do, the, the basic, the basic notion is that you get home rule over your city, so that a lot of state laws that are designed to apply one size fits all, you have what our Supreme Court's called supreme authority over municipal affairs, which sounds pretty exciting. And a constitution that allows you to either expand or restrict the council's authority. So, it's, it can be a constitution that gives you powers that the state wouldn't ordinarily give you. But it can also be a bill of rights that says to the voters, you know, we hear you, there are some things that you don't want, and we're going to guarantee you that you will never get them. And one city that recently went to charter, a very detailed charter, very unlike the one that was, you submitted previously, they, one of their provisions is they will never have a, a marijuana dispensary. So, they've kind of locked that in. Now, obviously, you wouldn't make a different choice. But that's a, kind of an unusual provision in the charter, but it was something that was apparently important to the people that lived in that city. So, there is an exception for powers that you can't grant yourself, and that's what the, the area that is, are considered matters of statewide concern. And who gets to decide what's a statewide concern? Well, the courts seem to let the legislature decide. So, I deal in an area, parts of our state have cities, city councils and, and school districts that are very unrepresentative. And so, voting rights is a, a matter of statewide concern. So, you can have a local law that says this is how we elect people, or you can have a charter that says this is how we elect people, and it all goes away when you have a voting rights claim, because the state law governs that and requires certain changes under certain circumstances. So, but it's, it can be broader than that and somewhat vague, you know, and then, and then they, the legislature and its wisdom says, well, it's a matter of statewide concern, but all these rules were made for you, it's not a state mandate, so you don't get compensated for it. So, there is a, a little bit of tension there. But looking at, at what a charter does, it fundamentally is about your form of government. And as I was saying, there are, there are a lot of provisions in the election code. I think we have a wonderful election code, but it is one size fits all. So, you can, if you have a charter, you can set your own election day, your own rules, you can have something called ranked choice voting, which is really nifty. You can have extra residency requirements. You can say, well, 30 days is enough, we want you to have lived here for a year before you run for office. You can describe the duties and roles of the council and mayor, how they appoint people and, and so on. You can specify the city manager functions. Some charters even say you need a super majority to change your city manager, for example. You can set term limits, although you can do that under the general law, too. And redistricting, that doesn't really apply here, because you're an at-large council. But that is an area where there's a very, very narrow opportunity to make your own rules. So, so that's kind of the, the original basis. But following on that, how you operate as, as a council is also something that you can change. The, the state law has a process for ordinances that involve second readings and delays and implementation. And for some cities, they, they conclude that that's really kind of hamstrings them in making some important decisions quickly. And you can expedite how you pass ordinances and resolutions. You can set your own quorum requirements, you can set procedures, and you can entrench them, and, and sometimes, you know, in particular cities, the public comes up with ideas about things they like or don't like about the city council, and you can, you can address their, their interests in that regard. You can add, for example, extra provisions about conflict of interest. There's some in state law, but you can ramp it up a bit. You can say extra things about what offices you can't have if you're on the city council. So, that's, this, this whole idea of legislative authority can be rewritten. Then there's a kind of an interesting piece. You have a, a school district, the elementary school district, that is entirely inside the city, but it's not co-terminous with the city. So, if you passed a charter that enabled you to do this, and the voters that are in the school district concurred, they would have to vote additionally, because they wouldn't want people outside the school district telling them what to do. But you could take over a lot of, you could enable them to vary their size in ways that the size of their board, how they're elected, what they do, whether they have a merit system. You would take over all the duties of the county board, and this is a very big county, so that, they, they might like that. And you could say how they have personnel, commissions, so you would be kind of a supervisory entity for the school district. And that may be something that, that you should consider. So, personnel matters. There's, you know, we have, you know, a wonderful code, a very complex code, because we're a big state, and we have a lot of talented lawyers that write these laws, and they've written a lot of them. But if you don't like the way that personnel matters are specified in the state law, you can change it for your city. You can have requirements and procedures, how much is compensated, what the terms are, what the tenure is, what the conditions for city personnel are. So, the, the, there is a state law that guarantees, you know, labor rights, public, public employee unions. That guarantees, you can't do anything with that. That's definitely statewide concern. But you can set procedures for that, and what happens when you come to an impasse in labor negotiations? So, that's a, that's an important piece of what you could be looking at in a charter. Then, the next series of things, I think, has a lot to do with development in a city. First of all, in, in classic state law, you, cities can only enter contracts in to carry out necessary functions. Now, that can be very broadly construed, but that whole notion of, of any restriction goes away in a charter city. Also, and this is something you want to be very careful about and listen to your constituents, but you could not pay the prevailing wage. Cities generally have to pay a prevailing wage to all their contractors. Charter cities do not, although they often choose to, unless they are being paid out of state and federal funds, in which case, they do. So, but that gives you some extra flexibility. So, you're starting to see how in running your city, in just the management of your city, there's more flexibility with a charter. And moving on that, on that theme, your financial powers. And this is one of the sillier things about, about state law, but there's a law that says that cities can't fine anybody for anything more than $1,000, which may not be appropriate in some cases. So, you can have fines and penalties as the voters authorize you to have. If blight is a problem, you want to start fining people for blight, or, or not mediating things, that's, that's within your authority. Also, taxes and assessment districts are subject to state laws, most of which were written a little bit over 100 years ago. So, many, many charters say we want to have, we want to have different taxes, or we want to have assessment districts. One specific thing is real estate transfer, tax transfers, that's something that is forbidden by state laws, but allowed to, to charter cities. You can change the way you do assessments. Now, this does not mean that you can start going passing taxes without regard to the voter approval provisions of Prop 218. That's, that's a matter of statewide concern. So, moving along this theme of what this means to a city that is, that sees itself as a, as a in transition or trying to redevelop itself, or, or has green fields, brown fields, is trying to transform in some, some vision, you have plenary authority to condemn properties for economic purposes, for economic development. That's something that is, is not so clear for, 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 for general law cities. The, the principle is they have to show a necessity, a nuisance. It's expanded a little bit under the Palenque Redevelopment Act, and under some financing district acts that were passed a decade ago. It's really complicated. And if you just want to say, you know, we're going to exercise eminent domain for, for the purposes of redevelopment, you, you can, you have a lot more leeway if you do that as a charter city. On, on the subject of, of eminent domain, you can increase the, from two-thirds to something higher, the, the super majority of the council is needed to exercise eminent domain. So, this is an example of, you can't reduce it. This is an example of where you're actually restricting yourselves. And that's, that's something that happens sometimes in charters. There, it's a, it's, you have both forms of flexibility. And it, there are, and this is, this is, this is, this would put you to sleep, but there are, the housing element generally, this doesn't, this is not a get out of, of scag jail for free. But there are, there are some changes, some simplification, especially when you get involved with voter approval for, for, for housing element projects that charter cities can enjoy. So, so when you put together the contracting, the financial powers, and the eminent domain and redevelopment, you, you really can build a city that is much more powerful in terms of, of redeveloping its, its areas, if that's its agenda. And for some cities, it's not. But that's, that, that is something that I've, I've heard many cities talk about, if they're either a new city or a city that is looking to change its land use. So, and, oh, that's actually one of the more important things. The, you can do zoning variances, I thought that was in here. So, you have a general plan, but you can, can make exceptions from that general plan. So, there are, I got, a little less than a third of California cities are charter cities. And I highlighted Carson, just because it's very different than, you know, some charters were born out of frustration. There's a particular state law that somebody doesn't, that the city doesn't like, maybe everybody in the city doesn't like it. And so, they write a, you know, one-line charter, says, we're chartering, this is the law that doesn't apply to us. And then there, you know, there can be short charters, I mean, you, you put one before the voters in the past. But this is kind of the other extreme, and I, I don't say it's necessarily the right way to go, but it's very detailed and, 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 and very, very comprehensive. It would be kind of an interesting, not model, but kind of a checklist to say, is that something we want to do, is that not? But it's, it's also relatively up to date. A, a problem with charters is some charters were written 100 years ago to, to, to deal with changing or deal with avoiding state laws that no longer exist. So, you have to keep in mind, charters are not easy to change, you have to go before the voters. So, there's a balance here. But there are opportunities, and I think it's, you, you need to approach it from the standpoint of, yeah, we'd like our jobs to be easier, we'd like to accomplish these goals and, and not have to deal with requirements that Sacramento made up for an incredible, I mean, we are, by any conceivable measure, the most diverse state in the nation, you know, in, in terms of the size and, and mobility of, of, of our population. And not, it's, it's not always appropriate or efficient for a, a body to accommodate the one-size-fits-all laws that come out of Sacramento. And, and that's, that's the concept here, that's, that's what the, the, the charter option is about. May not be necessary. It's, it's a decision that I think you have to discuss among yourselves and light it with your own objectives. And, and you also have to come up with something that the people are going to vote for, you know, that, that makes them feel, you know, gives them a vision of why their city is special and why their city should have a charter, or deals with issues that they'd like to see addressed. So, I, I'd like to be available to all of you, I think my contact information is here, I'm happy to answer questions now, or, or offline, or whatever. But as I said, it's, it's, it's a, I mean, the big picture here is it's a way to define your city, and it's a way to empower your city, but it's something you need to approach cautiously, because you are either deliberately or inadvertently also restricting your city. Something you've been alone for a long time, and it's not easy to change. I mean, that's what a constitution is, right? That's what the federal constitution is. So, that's, that would be my, my, my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
To the chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, for your presentation. Actually, this is very good, to tell you the truth, because you highlight some important issues about charter city, because, because you mentioned about, you know, it, it's a constitution that we can create for our city, and to make our city more powerful, right? And also for economic development and, and some other. One of the questions that I have, because you mentioned something about the schools, you know, Hawthorne, we're very particular, because we have five school districts.
Right.
Right? So, let's say, for example, one of the community have one school that belongs to one district that's been begging Hawthorne to take over. So, so if you were to become a charter, is that particular issue could have been resolved quickly, or it's more challenged?
So, this would be a consolidation.
Well, I'm not saying consolidation, but maybe one school that is in northeast of Hawthorne that would love to be part of the Hawthorne other school district.
Oh, part, so moving a school from one district to another district?
Yes. So, so let's say if we become a charter, can we put something on the books, let's say, can we consolidate some of this district to become much more effective, much more real, much more for our community?
That would- That would stay with the, initially with the county board.
Uh-huh.
And then also, you, you could develop a, you could replace the county board for the existing school district that is wholly inside of Hawthorne.
Uh-huh.
But on that kind of issue of reorganization, that would go to something called the County Committee on School District Reorganization, which is actually the same thing as County Board of Education in LA County. And so that is kind of beyond your pale, but if they, and then it has to go actually typically to the state board.
The state, yeah.
Because there are, there are issues of racial segregation that they want to check on. So they have to clear it for that purpose, which is definitely a state concern. But if it, if it, if they approved it, then, and, and if the voters of the school district approved it, you could, you could then kind of take over from the county board and go, going forward on, on, on supervising the school district. Not governing the school district. They'd have their same government.
They'd have the same board, yeah.
But you could, they could come to you and a lot of school districts, I did come, they want to expand the board. You could do that. You could, you know, help them create trustee areas. So, so that, that's the limits of your authority there.
Okay. So my second question is, you see what's happening in Inglewood and also in Carson? All this economic development, right, is going very fast, right? Is that because they are charter cities? Because they have much more leeway to pass their own zoning laws and their own, you know, the wages? Is that, is, is a key indicator that because they charter cities that they've been developed much more than, say Hawthorne?
Well, I mean, this whole area of land use is where I see a lot of, of charter cities saying the, the state law is just too complicated. And, you know, there has been some accommodations. There are all these, these incremental acts, but it, it, I don't, I don't want to, your city attorney is far more authoritative on this than I am. But it's a big compliance burden just to, but whereas if you're a charter city, you can create a redevelopment district, you can, you can tax, you can have vacancy taxes, you can, you can have, you know, meaningful economic incentives in place. You can have assessment districts to, to much more easily than, and you can have zoning variances. That's, that's probably one of the biggest things is you don't have to, you're not completely hogtied by, by a general plan to adopt it. You have a lot more flexibility. And then on layered on top of that, you have your contracting. You don't have to have, you don't have to have competitive bidding.
Bits.
So, and you have your financial authorities of fines and, and incentives and, and your eminent domain powers are expanded. So it, it, all these things are relevant to, 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 to the kind of infrastructure development you're talking about.
So let me give you an example. I don't know if, if you know the answer. But let's say in the past, somebody wanted to put an outlet mall in Hawthorne, but they said we couldn't do it because the seat of commerce is only 12 miles away from us. And apparently you have to have at least 18 miles. Is that something that we could have override of the state law?
Is that a state law?
It is a state law. If we would become a charter city?
I, I don't know the answer to that one. I, I, I wasn't aware of that law.
It is.
Yeah, I, I believe you.
Can you research that?
I, I will. I'll get back to you on that.
Yes.
I think that's more of an industry standard. I don't, that's not a law.
Well, it, it's not just, but apparently if we, if we wanted to, to go do the outlet mall, we would have to go to the state and, and, and beg for a waiver, blah, 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 blah. So those are the kinds of things that, you know, in my head, we're thinking about it. If we became a charter city, can we prevent those things to happen and we can just go ahead and do it?
And, and the test, unfortunately, it's not always a clear test. If there is a state law, is the state law in the eyes of the court, is it, is it a matter of statewide concern or is it, is it local? And, and the courts are, the courts are showing some flexibility.
Of course. It would be, it would be like a local state control, not the statewide.
So, and, and as I say, sometimes it's what the legislature says. There's something called the California Voter Participation Act, which says, you know, the, these odd year elections that people have, there, some cities have, they're not, they're not good. They're not good anyplace. And it looks to me like it's a matter of statewide concern, but the legislature didn't put in big letters and, and when they passed the law, you know? And the court said, no, if you're a charter city, you can have your, your elections whenever you want. So, so I think there is, that's, that's kind of a bad example, example I don't agree with. But, but no, you, you get around, you have a lot more flexibility.
More flexibility, okay.
That's absolutely true.
Thank you very much. This is, it's really enlightening. Thank you very much.
To the chair.
I will research that.
All right. Thank you.
I don't.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I, I had my ears perk up when you said eminent domain because instantly I thought about that disgusting mall across the street.
Oh, I think I saw that.
Right? I'm so sick of it. And I, I know all the residents of Hawthorne are too.
Even the palm trees are dying.
It, it talks about eminent domain and how it, you know, there needs to be, you know, affects the voter approval, of course, right? But can you imagine just being able to have an authority under a charter to be, to have that ability? I mean, just the imagination just keeps going on and on and on in my head. But we've done fairly well under the leadership of our city manager with regards to holding our portfolio, you know, inquiring property, making developments, talking about how we could implement housing, how we can implement first home buyers. So it just goes on and on. And so when you talk about eminent domain, it's just another ability that could, could help in our efforts to just continue to grow our city. Because again, we're not getting smaller, we're getting larger. And some of the other cities that I see that you have on the slide right now kind of speaks to why they're able, as some have alluded to, develop so quickly. You know, developments and projects that are developing so quickly and building out in some of these cities. It's quite evident if you look at the, the cities, 125 cities. I'm, I'm interested and just for the sole reasons that you outlined here this evening. So I want to thank you for your time. I know we'll probably have you back at a later time just to do some additional research for us. But again, thank you for your presentation and thank you, Vaughn, for your leadership on this. And yeah, I think it's, it has great potential. We just needed a little bit more direction and good, good information.
You know, I think another way to look at it is a process. It's really an opportunity and a requirement to engage with the voters, to engage with your community and say, and to have, to project some kind of vision of why it's necessary.
Yep.
And, you know, that's why, you know, if, if you do that and the voters agree with you, then that's the reason to get, to, to override these state laws.
Well, let me ask you just one last question because it just dawned on me. I know that Councilmember Patterson had inquired with regards to how we could maybe do some annexation property from LA County into the city, just because it's probably a sliver or, or something very, very minimal. Would that have any effect, say for instance, if a charter, if we become charter city, that we wouldn't still have that ability to, to maybe do that? And maybe that's a laugh call question to the, you know, Select Committee on Boundaries and Special Districts and things like this. But do you know if that would have any effect? If we become a charter city, could we still have the ability to annex properties from LA County?
Oh, it definitely wouldn't, wouldn't negatively affect that.
Okay.
And as you probably know, there are several relatively new laws about not only jurisdictional islands, but disadvantaged communities.
Yes.
That, you know, where they're, they don't, they, they could benefit from having utilities and integrated into a larger city and that, that do promote annexation. And none of that would change if you went to a charter city.
Okay. Vaughn, can you just maybe at some point do, do a feasibility to identify disadvantaged districts in our community? Just to have that on one of our, just, yeah, just, just to have a tab in one of our policies, procedures to identify disadvantaged communities in our city.
I know that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
And I'm available to any, oh, oh, please, please.
Yeah, we have a few more questions.
Oh, yeah, it's good.
If you don't mind.
Good. I like questions.
There's a few things that, that you mentioned. I was hoping that you can kind of come back and, and address again. You had, you had mentioned one eminent domain for the purpose of economic development. And so as opposed to currently, we can only do eminent domain for public use or what's the term?
Well, for public necessity or nuisance.
Public necessity.
But I want to, this is like so many areas, there are, there are complicated exceptions because general law cities have gotten the legislature to, to, you know, there are Palenque Redevelopment Act and then there's, there are kind of some, 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 it's just easier if you, you, you can kind of write your own rules.
But I want to get a little bit of clarity about that concept, though. If we did, you know, use eminent, eminent domain like on the mall, we wouldn't be restricted to use that property as like a parking lot. Like it can be somehow used.
Exactly.
For economic development purposes.
Exactly. That's the concept. That's, that's where charter cities do have, have an edge.
And then you had mentioned like special kind of tax districts or things like that. Is that kind of like in Hancock Park where they have, they have that, that little, that little street? Let's not use that example, but would we be able to like identify a part of Hawthorne that might pay a little bit of extra assessment, assessments for that money to go towards keeping that part of Hawthorne, that strip of retail or, or maybe restaurant district, you know, kind of nice and, and cute?
You could, right? I mean, you still have Prop 218 to worry about, you know, and getting approval for that. But yeah, you have broader powers to have special districts than, than a general city.
And then talk, talk to us a little bit about redevelopment. So we can create our own redevelopment district?
Yes.
And, and help me to kind of understand really what that means.
So it's, you have much broader taxation and assessment powers. You're not limited by the assessment district rules. And you can, you can also have local assessment laws that are more flexible and give you greater authority than you have under, under state law. And, and yes, you can have a, a redevelopment zone. To some extent, as I said, these financing district acts that were passed in 2014 give general law cities some, some similar powers, but it's kind of a maze, you know? Whereas if you, if you have a vision for your, your, your city, part of it, and you have the, the zoning issue of being able to do variances spontaneously, so you're not, the state law kind of makes you do a general plan and then that can constrain you even though it's, it's not a state law. But this, this gives you more flexibility there. So it's a question of being nimble.
And so when we talk about zoning variances, that, that means like we can kind of do what they call a spot zoning? Like we can take a particular property and adjust the zoning different than what the general plan?
Yeah, I don't want to say.
Help me to understand.
Spot zoning exactly. Because there are, there are constitutional limits on, you know, you can't, you can't be completely, I don't want to say arbitrary. Sometimes when people say spot zoning, that has that connotation. You have flexibility, right?
It's a term that I picked up. Help me to understand exactly, like an example of zoning variance, you know, freedom, like how that would come into play and what that would look like.
Well, you have, you have a hearing and you, you give permission to do something that was not consistent with the general plan. Because somebody has a good reason. I mean, I, this is a different state, but, you know, when my parents were older, they needed to have a bedroom on the first floor. And, and that needed, with the office, they needed a zoning variance. And that's generally not a difficult thing, but in California, you know, you're, if your general plan says this is the way it is, it's, it's kind of hard to change. So yes, that would be, it's, it's a question of, in theory, a general law city can do a lot of these development things, but it's an awful, it's, it's a slow process because there's a lot of restrictions and, you know.
One other question, kind of skipping around, talking about Inglewood. Is it, is it the fact that they're a charter city, they were able to use eminent domain and use that property for economic purposes? I, I can't remember the exact property, but I know there was a big complaint that they use eminent, eminent domain and use that land for the Clipper Stadium or something like that, where if it were their general law city, they wouldn't be able to do it in that same respect?
I, I can't, I can't be too detailed about that. I don't know enough about the, this is the SoFi Stadium?
It's Clipper Stadium, the In- 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 Dome. I, I think it was actually for the stadium, I think it was for the parking structure. They used eminent domain to grab that property, that land and they.
I'd have to research the details.
Built the parking. I don't remember what was there, but was it? Yeah. So, but essentially what you're saying, it, it allows greater flexibility, having, being a charter, or it can allow. And of course, it can, it has its own restrictions as well. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Can you leave that screen up, please?
Thank you.
Okay, I like. I will. Now, everything's good. Thank you for being here, sir. I just want to add some comments of my own for the benefit of the residents out there. So there, there's a, there's a saying out there that says if it isn't broken, why fix it, right? Do you guys know what I mean? If it's not broken, why, why fix it? I think our system of government, our general law system of government has worked for us for so many years. I kind of actually take offense that this is being brought up and we're kind of through these conversations that we're having up here, we're saying that our, our city is not doing well economically, that we need such a governmental system change in order to bring us up to par. That's, actually, that's offending our city manager and all our staff members who have done hard work to be able to turn, turn around the city from a $5 million cash balance to like about, what is it, like 85, 90 million dollars? So we've, we're in a great pace, place economically. So like I say, if it isn't broken, why fix it? So I'm clearly opposed to bringing up this charter issue again and putting it on the ballot because the residents just voted for this thing, against this, 61%, 39%, 17 months ago. Okay? And by bringing the expert, thank you, sir, with all respect, you put your information together. We had our city attorney up here talking about this. It's almost like we're trying to tell you, the residents, that you were wrong in voting against the charter. And that's not, and that's kind of a, not giving you the residents credit, having made a solid stern decision, 61% to 39%, that's like about 22%. So I am, I am with the residents. I'm going to oppose this if the rest of my council member colleagues want to decide to put this on there again. I mean, there's no purpose, what? So the salary can ask for higher salaries? You guys remember that? That's not going to go away. And maybe taking away further rights for you, that you have as residents? So I think this is just redundant and we just need to move on from this and we need to have some sense up here just to kind of just put this to rest already. Good? Thank you, sir, though, for being here and presenting your information and, yeah. The oral communications part.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing body... The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
I don't have any cards. Does anybody wish to speak in the rest of the council? Feel free to do so. Please line up now, though, if you could.
Good evening, Moaldala, president of the Kiwanis Club Hawthorne. So you guys remember back in 2022 when, uh, the charter city had failed? Once again, you guys are bringing it up. Well, this year, for my campaign, I'm gonna do a hundred and ten percent against it. You guys shouldn't be bringing this up again. And also, if you want to bring the language about what you can and can't do, tell the residents about the salary. But I'll edu-, I'll educate them this year. Thank you.
Hello, Neil Michelin with the, um, El Camino Board of Trustees. First of all, thank you, um, Hawthorne residents for all your support at El Camino, including, uh, three generations of the Balboas, so, um, we are a community college and today I'm reporting to the community about all the great things that we've done. And a lot has, a lot has happened since the last time I've been here. We got a new administration building, we have a new pool, we have a new arts building, we have a new black student success center, we have a new behavioral, um, science building and a new social justice center. And we just opened up a new student clinic to give a state-of-the-art, um, care to our students. So we have something for everybody, so please, uh, think about attending one of our classes, think about attending one of our events. A few important dates that are coming up. On March sixteenth, Saturday, that's Anizuka Day, to honor astronaut Anizuka who perished in the Challenger disaster. Every year, we have an astronaut come and speak to, uh, students about space, about STEM. So if you know anybody from fifth grade to twelfth grade, please have them come, um, on Saturday, March the sixteenth. April thirteenth, midterm classes begin, April fifteenth, weekday classes begin. So if you need more, uh, information, please check the El Camino College website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the council? If not, I declare oral communications closed. The consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items on the consent calendar. There are items five and six for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item six, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four for adoption.
Please, please vote. I don't have access, let it just pop up here.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Ordinances, please.
Item seven. Ordinance number two two five one, first reading and ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending section two dot three zero dot one four zero, salaries of the silly, city clerk and the city treasurer of chapter two dot three zero civil service, general provisions and regulations of title two, administration, civil service and personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and finding, and making a finding of exemption and compliance with SEQA in connection therewith for introduction.
I introduce.
Okay, were there any comments? Okay. Go ahead. You looked like you were gonna say something.
I, I, I wanted to make an emo- a motion for this.
All right. Um, any changes or anything at the next meeting? At the next meeting, you can still do it.
Okay.
Chair.
Because, um, the only, the only reason, um, it needs to either be introduced or not is because it's listed as such. So, yeah, so just, that's the only, you're restricted, we're restricted to only doing what's on the, uh, agenda. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so the ordinance is just being introduced today. It's open for adoption at the second reading, which will be at the next council meeting. And there will be, you can have full discussion then. Um, if he had a quick question about it, then we could, we could discuss that. But in terms of amending it, amending the wording of the ordinance, uh, you should wait until the second reading before vote.
You said December thirtieth.
No, 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 at the next meeting. The next council meeting, sorry.
You just pull the item, that's all. Pull the item for discussion. To the chair.
Yes.
Uh, I wanted to actually pull eight, but this is the only one, right? Before we go on to nine? I'm, I mean, out of general matters, can I, can I pull item eight for discussion and you could take everything else?
No, there's only one item for this, for eight.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought.
So we're, we're on item seven, that was introduced. General matters, can you read that, please?
Item eight, protocols for supporting nonprofits' special events. Recommended motion establishing a selection process for the support of nonprofits requesting support for collaboration with the city of Hawthorne.
To the chair.
Yes.
Uh, item number eight, before we take a vote, it's asking to provide protocols for supporting nonprofits. I just want to make a, uh, amendment if we could, or add that, um, that in the protocols for supporting nonprofits, that not only procedures, uh, procedures, but, uh, also to make, um, findings for any nonprofits, all nonprofits that are coming before us for assistance or to be placed on for consideration, um, that they also, that we make a review of all of the nonprofits with the Secr-, uh, state of California for, uh, Secretary of State to ensure that they're LLCs, nonprofits, et cetera, okay? Thank you.
Angie, are you saying you want to make sure that they're current?
I want to, that's, that's how you find out whether or not.
No, I know, I'm aware of that, but I'm just trying to understand what you're asking for.
Yeah, to ensure that they're listed as a nonprofit through the state of California.
Okay.
And then you'll find everything else on them there.
I just want to add a quick comment here. I guess the aim here is to, I know that a lot of nonprofits come before and they talk, they ask for help and they want to invite people, et cetera. And a lot of people see this as a forum to be able to get support from the city and you guys and et cetera. So we just want to sometimes, uh, personally, I think that this is helpful in order to see how established those nonprofits are. If, uh, they're just starting off and they just think that the city is going to be able to give them that boost to start off. And, uh, maybe it's not a nonprofit, I mean, it's not true. It's maybe not even, they're not even registered, which is what was asked right here. So I know a lot of things sound nice up here, but you know, sometimes if you read a little bit more, they're, they could be doing great things. You read a little bit more, they could have been having like, uh, bad administration of funds or no funds, et cetera, so. It's very important.
Yeah.
I think it's very important that we do this.
And also to the chair, um, there also needs to be a decision that's ultimately, ultimately made on whether or not they are exclusive Hawthorne nonprofits, or if we could take, um, those from other communities in partnership with the city of Hawthorne. So that's something that we're gonna have to decide here because oftentimes we get folks from Los Angeles, sometimes we get folks from other areas of the South Bay and they're not necessarily Hawthorne, but they, they, um, provide services to the city of Hawthorne. So all of that needs to be taken into consideration, too.
Yeah, no, and, uh, I've had, I've had some concern with some of the sports groups, or maybe the swimming pool. I mean, I've talked to people here in the city about my concerns. Um, they might be registered as a South Bay or city of Hawth-, it's very general. I mean, if they're servicing like ten percent Hawthorne's, uh, children, then, and the rest of the, uh, people, ninety percent is from outside of the city, that's not servicing our, uh, community members, right? And I think we need to prioritize our community members. We're not a receptacle for all those people who can't get space at their sports centers in other, our neighboring cities.
That's, that's true.
I would prefer, even if some of these, uh, some of these sports centers, et cetera, uh, sports centers that we have or facilities were, were vacant in usage as opposed to, you know, and available for those groups that might, it might occur that they want to get involved and use this space. But you can't because you already got these groups that are set, set up and are blocking time, you know, and not being, making, you know, the pool available, some of the fields available, et cetera, so. I'm just speaking how it is.
No, yeah, you're absolutely right. We all have to share.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, this is good. Thank you, Vaughn, for putting this on the agenda. But just be aware that, uh, there is a nonprofit organization, uh, that is a different category, right? So, uh, you have five oh one C threes, five oh one C fours, five oh one C eights, et cetera, et cetera. So when you're going to talk about nonprofits, first of all, they have to have an, uh, a determination letter from IRS, right? That it said exactly he's a five oh one C three, or five oh one C four, or five oh one C eight, et cetera, et cetera. Then they do have the Secretary of State, that is the Article of incorporation that has to be submitted to Secretary of State, that give you a certificate of nonprofit. And they also, every two years, you have to submit your statement of interest to make sure that you active. So you can go online and put the name, they will tell you if you're active or not active. So when it comes down that if we're going to create a policy about helping the nonprofit, so you have to establish the sense of who is five oh one C three, what they do it, what they don't do, what is five oh one C four, what is a five oh one C eight? Because these people do different things. For example, homeowner, a neighborhood association is a complete difference from a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that provides service, okay? So you would have to create guidelines. And for me, for example, the, the easy way, if anybody out there could be the homeowner association, or the neighborhood association, or the church, or the, or the nonprofit five oh one C three, if they want to do something with the city, then they have to submit a proposal. They have to submit as a prov-, as a, a proposal to the city manager with all that, the common, all the documents, five oh one C three. Like, for example, when we apply for the firework, we have to submit the five oh one, the nonprofit letter, we have to submit the Secretary of State, we have to submit, I don't know, all the financial statements. So this is not easy. You, you guys think it is, but it's not easy. I've been doing nonprofits for forty years. So if you're going to, you have to establish criteria. Because a nonprofit, for example, like, such as Ridgestone Family Center or the Justice Star is a different from a neighborhood association or church. So you have to figure it out, all of that. So my thing is to make it easy. So everybody would have to submit a proposal to the city manager with all the documents and then the city manager will present to the city council, say, okay, this group is one to do A, B, C, D. Okay? It's like almost you applying to a foundation. So when you, when you apply for a grant, you have to submit your proposal to a foundation, show them all your credentials, show them your financial statement, show them how, how long you've been in business and what is your goal, what are your objectives, what you go, what you're planning to do. Okay? So this is not just an easy cake, do you think it is?
Yep.
No, um, and, uh,
No, can I just make men-, can I just make mention, um, in my work, um, there has to be, say, um, a verification process. And that's all it is. It's a veri-, it's a very, it's a verification process. So when you, that's great that you're saying proposal, because that's what we've been asking all along when people want to come and partner with us, that they bring us like who, what, where, when, and who's, you know, how, how it's, uh, how it's going to be, uh, organized, coordinated, et cetera. I mean, if they're the ones proposing it, it should come from them, right? Because at the end of the day, it's our workforce that has to, um, work on it, right? But it's just a, it's a verification, it's a verification. And if you're registered, uh, with the Secretary of State to receive especially monies, right? Especially to receive money, monies, uh, a check, you're, you're gonna find yourself, uh, there on that site as a, as a nonprofit. And I understand what you're saying, there's many different types of nonprofit, that's not what we're trying to say here. We're just trying to, we're just trying to verify that they're in fact, uh, reporting their nonprofit earnings.
Yeah, the, the thing is, the Secretary of State website will only give you if you're active or not active. It will not tell what kind of nonprofit it is. So you, so that what I'm saying is, so we can just create, if anybody wants to come to the city and ask to, to, to do something, they have to submit a proposal. And Vaughn, if you want, I'll give you the guidelines, what, what to expect, and then we'll make you easy, because it's like almost a request for proposal, right? So there is a different guidelines. Okay, you have to, you have to give the, as a summary, you have to give, guess, your, your, your objective, your vision, your, your, how you're going to measure this. So, so if you want, I can give you one page, what they have to submit to us for us to approval or disapproval.
Though, I really appreciate you guys talking about this and Mr. City Manager. But the, the, the thing, why we're talking about this and why does it seem like there's just, uh, a, a, expansive debate on this, it's just, it's the city's money. You can't, we can't just give it, we can't just get money out of the, the city's general fund and give it just to anybody off the street. That's a gift of general funds. That we're ta-, that we're, we're shifting from a, maybe an employee's salary, you know, a project, uh, of infrastructure that's for the public good and giving it to somebody that might just come before the, uh, city council and we don't know anything about them. And, and we're just basically giving it away and maybe they just do, they're just using that just to pay themselves. Because, you know, nonprofits have the, they pay the people that run it, right? And maybe it's, we need to see if they're established, if they have a good reputation, or if it's just, not just a money-making gimmick that some of these nonprofits that are set up out there have. You know, which might be a minority, but they, they exist and that's what we're fearful of. And, uh, I think it's worth having.
Verification.
Verification, thank you. So, so, do you have instruction, Mr. City Manager? You good? Was that one, was that one of, uh, Councilmember Montero's directives? I'm just kidding. All right, go ahead.
Can I go ahead, can I, can I go ahead and move on item number eight?
Okay, I'm gonna be taking the Councilmember Montero's training on this.
Yeah, I moved on, uh, item number eight. Can I get a second? Thank you.
Please vote, guys.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
City manager's consent calendar, please. Oh, uh, we have the city manager's consent calendar and we're gonna be pulling item twelve for a presentation. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you read all items except for item twelve into the record?
Item nine, annual comprehensive financial report of the city of Hawthorne for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Uh, ma'am, just a real quick, is item nine our presentation? Felice, is item nine our presentation? Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Go ahead, ma'am.
Item ten, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the County of Los Angeles Fire Department recognizing Hawthorne Police, Police Department's paramedic provider agency status. Item eleven, allow staff to seek a buyer for the Hawthorne Police Department nineteen eighty-eight M D five hundred E helicopter. Item thirteen, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and W G J Enterprises Incorporated, D B A, P C I for on-call citywide traffic striping, signing, and pavement marking services on an as-needed basis. Item fourteen, Zella Park, Zella Davis Park Improvement, city project number two four dash zero four, out to bid. Item 14, Zella Davis Park Improvement, City Project Number 24-04, out to bid. Item 15, First Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Design Services, First Amendment between the City of Hawthorne (City) and Reyna Alamar Architect, Inc., RADA (Consultant). Item 16, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Draxton (DBA Blackstone Tower Partners LLC) for the transportation of and improvements to a city-owned vehicle. Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion to approve all items on the city manager's consent calendar except for item 12?
I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
One moment.
Do we need to wait for that update?
Mine's not working.
That thing is.
Not yet, not ready. There it is. Oh my gosh, what's the delay in between?
I have to type it in.
Oh!
Oh, you do?
Okay.
Okay.
Type faster, no, just kidding.
The votes are in.
We'll sort all that stuff out. It's not a problem.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you. Item 12, the ARPA Fund Discussion, is the gentleman here?
Yeah, he's here.
Is anybody from staff? Let's just get, let's get straight into it, sir.
He's ready.
Yeah, I don't know, I thought somebody was going to choose him. Sorry for that confusion, Mr. City Manager. My apologies. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening to provide you an update on the business assistance programs that are part of your ARPA funding. Again, my name is Ken Duran, I'm with HDL Companies. We were retained by the city a couple of years ago to assist the city with the implementation of your ARPA funding. And one component of that are the business assistance programs that the city adopted about a year and a half ago. We had quite a bit of success on a number of the programs, so we're pleased to give you an update tonight on some of those. One of the programs, we actually have closed out already. But the first program we want to highlight is the Community Gift Card Program, which currently there are 24 businesses that are merchants that are recipients of the program. There have been 248 cards to date that have been purchased with $5,730 in value that's been redeemed at those 24 merchants. There still is a pretty significant balance left of $21,500, which is available for additional gift card purchases. So that's an ongoing program that the city and our company continues to market in the community. The second program, excuse me, were the Business Assistance and Marketing Assistance Grants. There was money set aside in these programs to allocate $5,000 in funds for businesses to be able to use towards receiving business assistance services. And those services are being provided by the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, the WIB, and Trepepi Smith, who is a marketing firm. To date, there are nine businesses that are currently working with the WIB on having those services provided to them. And there are five businesses that are currently working with Trepepi Smith on their marketing services. There are about five businesses that have not been responsive to Trepepi Smith. They've been trying to outreach to them since the beginning of the year. This is something that's been an ongoing effort in all these programs. You know, these are small businesses, and a lot of times they're very busy. And so a lot of times it takes several follow-ups to them, to engage them in understanding, you know, what services are being offered to them and available to them. The next program is the one that we have concluded and has closed out, and that was a grant program for rental assistance for businesses who fell behind in their rent. The program offered $5,000, and those payments were made to tenants landlords directly. And there have been eight businesses that have been awarded those grants, and as I said, that program has been closed out. The next program that we are initiating is a boarded-up business storefront improvement program. And these would be grants to property owners of vacant buildings to make improvements to their storefronts, specifically buildings that are vacant and boarded up. Funds will be used for them to make cosmetic improvements to their buildings, such as graffiti removal and painting, specifically a painting of the boarded-up portions of their building. The requirement would be that the city would review the scope of work and inspect the work upon completion, and the funds would be distributed on a reimbursement basis. So the work would need to be completed before the landlord would be able to receive those funds. So right now, we're in the final phases of finalizing the specific details of the program with your staff. We think that that should be completed within 60 days. We're also identifying specific buildings in the city that would be targeted for this program, those that have been vacant and boarded up for quite some time. So this will be a targeted program where once we have the criteria available, we will be contacting those individual businesses to explain the program to them and assist them with the application process. And once the businesses have been approved, they will be required to submit a scope of work of what improvements that they would be accomplishing under this grant program. And the city staff, building inspectors if required, or other staff would be inspecting the work if necessary to make sure that it's in compliance with any city codes, and also to make sure it complies with the scope of work that was submitted by the business when they applied for the grant. So that program should be launching, as I said, we're finalizing the details within the next 60 days, and should be launching shortly thereafter. So that's just a brief update on these programs. Be happy to answer any questions on any of the programs if you have.
To the chair.
So we are hosting the City of Hawthorne Business Expo. We're going to have 100 businesses at the expo. This is a great opportunity for someone from your organization to come and share this information to the businesses, why they're there, and they have the opportunity to sign up. So I'm asking if someone from your organization can be at our business expo and come on and make the announcement why we have those businesses there, March 14, and it's from 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
Date again was the 14th?
March 14. I have a flyer, there's a flyer out there on the table, but we definitely need you to come, or someone from your organization, and make that announcement why we have all of those businesses there. Because I know that, I think your slide said 24 people, and we'll have 100 people there. So this is another way where we can reach the businesses directly.
Wonderful, yeah. Yeah, we're looking for those kinds of opportunities where we can reach out directly to the businesses, and we can assist them with signing up to be a merchant as part of the program right on the spot. So yes, we'll make sure that we have somebody available.
That's the perfect opportunity.
Make sure you connect with me.
Yeah, we will, and I'll work with our city staff as well.
Thank you.
Kudos, that's a really good idea. Excellent idea.
To the chair. Good work, Katuna. Thank you for the presentation, sir. I was curious to know, you said that there was a few businesses that have not, you've not been able to contact since January, the beginning of the year, with regards to getting the assistance that's available to them through our city. Was that January last year, or was it just this year?
This year.
Okay, because I was going to say, I'm ready to move on. You know what I mean? To offer it to somebody that wants it, right? Okay. And then the other question I had, you mentioned that you had remaining, was it 21,000, 2100? What was it, the amount that you had remaining?
Just over 21,000 left in the gift card program, 21,590.
Okay, so I've been asking the city manager to work with me with regards to a concept that I have. The business that we have here in Hawthorne is known as Ring. You're familiar with Ring, where you install that at your home for surveillance and security purposes, because of all the crime that we have with regards to property theft, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to see how we could use maybe the $21,590 to buy some of the Ring units and use as a, what I had initially thought of was this, give a credit of $100 for the resident that's going to purchase it, right? Give them a $100 credit. But they have to have it installed, they have to actually install it, show us that they have it installed, et cetera, before they could get that credit. However, to be able to leverage that to provide for more residents to have the opportunity to purchase a ring, use the remaining 21,590, City Manager, to make that connection. So that's what I'd like to see happen with the remainder money, that residents could ultimately buy a ring for their home to secure their property, and then in turn, they would be given an incentive for doing so, and it would be up to a certain dollar. However, they have to prove to us that they purchased it, and more importantly, that they installed it. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, the 21,590 is only for the gift card program?
Okay.
If you'll see from the other programs, like the Business Assistance Program, there was 125,000 budgeted or available, and there's only, there's only about 20 businesses that are receiving the $5,000 grant. So there are pots of money in some of these other grant programs, that we've been talking to staff about how to maybe reallocate those. So if you'd like, we can explore that.
Yep, reallocate those monies.
Yeah, we actually have another client that's actually doing a catalytic converter etching program.
Okay.
Using their funds similar to that, where it, some of the funds will offset the cost of either etching or caging a catalytic converter.
Yep.
So it's a very similar program to what you're describing.
Yep, our department, police department had an etching, is it etching? Etching program where residents could go to the police department and have that done. And yeah, I think that was a great program. I'd like to maybe, next year, maybe have that, see that, be out doing that again.
To the chair.
Can you use that 21,000 as gift cards at the business expo? Like to, when people sign up, give them a gift card during the business expo? The business, the businesses, not the regular crowd, but the businesses.
Mr. Duran, I was under the impression with the gift card is buy $25, get $25 back. So I don't know how we would perform the credit test.
I was going to say, that would be, yeah, the way the program is structured, it's a buy 25, get a 25.
Okay.
But, you know, let me work with your staff to see if there's another way we can help to incentivize businesses to sign up.
Okay.
I think he had everything mapped out with usage of that money, and it sounds like so.
Well, he said he got 21,000 left over, so I'm trying to, trying to figure out how we can.
That's for the gift card. That's true. But we want to encourage your residents to buy the cards and get the free cards to use that 21,000.
I'm trying to figure out how to reallocate that money.
I hear you, I hear you. Okay. No, thank you so much. It's great work, and it's good to see that the South Bay Work Enforcement Board is finally, they've gotten paid, I understand, and they're able to provide the services that they're providing, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for being here.
My pleasure.
We have the elected officials' reports and recommendations. Let's see, did I skip anything? No.
Item 12.
I make a motion to accept the report.
Back it.
Please vote.
Oh, I was waiting. Okay, sorry. I was waiting for the say.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you. We have the elected officials' reports and recommendations, and we're going to start off with our city treasurer. Okay? Well, thank you for your service, ma'am. Thank you for everything you're doing in your role. Ms. City Clerk?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out and just hope everyone gets home safely, and that's pretty much it. Oh, wanted to remind everyone that notary services are available in the clerk's office, so if anyone needs any notary services, please do not hesitate to visit the clerk's office. The cost is $15 per signature.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Alex Montero, first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and thank you for listening us at home. Great presentation today. You know, I want to thank you, my colleagues, to support my choice for the Black History Month, Mr. James Wing, because, you know, he's been a leader and a mentor to youth in our community, so it was a good selection, so thank you for that. I want to say thank you to the staff, Vaughn, and all your team leadership, especially for the presentation about the new senior center. It looks beautiful. The new city yard, it's fantastic, I love it, so keep going. I have to say also, you know, the charter city, there is a lot of positive things about the charter city presentation. And you guys, you know, two years ago, I did oppose the charter city because I didn't think we deserved $75,000 salary for working part-time. But there is some other benefits of the charter city, so I will encourage our citizens to look at that, because when you look at the cities that was on that list, like Inglewood, Carson, Pasadena, all those cities have done outstanding economic development, their cities, and we are lacking behind. And we're seeing, you know, develop, all these developments going around us, they circumcise us, they're going from Inglewood to Gardena to Carson to Cover City, you know, and then Hawthorne is just in the middle of like we are a stepchild. Nothing has happened to, when it comes to economic development of some others, because it's nothing, the charter is nothing against our staff. Our staff is doing outstanding job. It's all about giving the people of Hawthorne the power and the constitution to decide in a lot of things, like zoning, land use, economically developed prosperity for the future. It's not about us here, because we could decide how much compensation is going to be on that charter. And believe it or not, I'm going to be a watchdog on that one if it comes down to that, you know, salary is not going to be one of the things that's going to be top priority for if we decide to go ahead with a new charter. I want to say that was a great day again in Hawthorne. We did a groundbreaking for improvement of the alleys, five blocks of alleys that's going to be improved. We started at Menlo and Oxford. So again, thanks to the Public Works Department for, you know, looking for grants and working with housing to get money from CDBG, from HUD, to give us authorization to do those improvement projects at those alleys that definitely need. And believe it or not, I got an email this afternoon that the City of Hawthorne is going to get another $200,000 for street improvement planning for safety. So more money's coming for public work. Thanks for the work of, you know, Agbar Salina, of all the crew, that they keep looking for grants to bring us money, because like we said, we have 32, now it's going to be almost 33 projects for improvement, of street improvement and safety, and only 4% of that come from our general fund. 96% is all grants, millions and millions of dollars. So thank you for that. Last Thursday, to tell you the truth, at my office at Monita Gardens MGI and Health and Dignity Center, Maxine Water Health and Dignity Center, we did a grand open of Venice Clinic. So Venice Clinic is going to be at York Avenue and 118, that is going to serve 7,000 students from Hawthorne School District, and they're going to be there for now twice a week, providing primary care, mental health, and some other health resources over there. On Saturday, actually, I was invited also to go to a grand open of a mini-market called Beyond Mini Market, right at the Shadrone Avenue, you know, the four-story building there next to that, what do you call them? You know, right there on Shadrone and Rose Grant. So there is a mini-market there, there's this lady, a very young lady just opened, so I asked the chief to go send one of the captains, say welcome to her, to make sure that she connect with our police department, and maybe to, maybe see if we can give her a business loan for marketing, since we giving those loans away. South Bay CAG is having the annual summit that's going to be on March 28. South Bay CAG is having the annual summit that's going to be on March 28 at the Carson Community Center. So you, all of you are invited. Make sure you go online and register yourself. South Bay CAG and on March 28. And I hope our city managers and the staff is going to have a boot there. South Bay CAG, March 28. Because in the past, we did have a boot to showcase in Hawthorne, what Hawthorne have to offer. And this year, the highlight of the conference is going to be AI, artificial intelligence. Okay? So it's a lot of talk about AI, so it's going to be the AI is the topic. And also what I learned about, when I went to the sanitation district board meeting, actually, they're using AI. You know, nowadays, you know, they send a camera on down to the sewage and then the, the camera gets all whatever issues in there, sends to the AI computer. The AI computer design the plan to fix the problem. So no more man going down to sewage to figure out the problem. So AI is here, so we need to make sure how to live with it. Make sure it's safe and it's protecting us, okay? So just FYI, next meeting, I'm not going to be here. It's March 12, correct? So Mr. Mayor, I want to be excuse on March 12, I'm not going to be here. Saturday, Ms. Katrina Manny, I'm not going to be here for the expo. And the 15, I'm not going to be here. The 16, I'm not going to be here for the cleanup, the community cleanup, so. So I'll be gone, you know, from March 9 to the 17, okay? So thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Katrina Manny.
Did you say councilman?
Councilwoman. Councilwoman.
I didn't hear woman.
Councilwoman. Councilmember, all right, we're safe now.
So you were going to start with him, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you to everybody for all their lovely presentations. I truly enjoyed it. Also, I want to mention again, the business expo happening March 14 at 3, from 3 to 7 PM. We're also, in addition to that, having the job fair at the same time. So if you're looking for a job, make sure you attend our job fair. We're also going to be having panel discussion as well. So we have a lot going on. It's going to be very informative, so make sure that you attend. And then, and the other thing is happening is Women's History Month. Last year, Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tim and I had Women's History Month event. And we're going to be doing it again, just so you know. We're going to be doing it again. So I am announcing that on March 30, from 12 to 2 PM, we are hosting Women's History Month. So make sure you come. We had a fabulous time last time and this time we'll have a fabulous time again. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention, and this is a directive to our city attorney, I'd like for you to put together some bylaws for our women's commission. I, I started it, but I realized I am not, this is not my area expertise. And this is a commission that I wanted to launch last year. And so this year, I'm going to defer to you to put that together. And then after you do your thing, you can come see me. Also, wanted to remind everybody, March 5, don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember David Patterson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making your voices heard on all issues. You know, it's, it's what makes, you know, our whole process great. And it's just wonderful to see everybody. It has been a few weeks since we've had a council meeting, so definitely missed everybody. I don't get a chance to, to see, you know, all the community members as much as I would like to. So this is always a great opportunity to, you know, to see everybody. Want to thank our city staff and our police department for all of your hard work. There's always a lot to do in the city of Hawthorne and appreciate your commitment to make sure it gets done. We do have an election on March 5. I want to encourage everybody to come out and vote or mail in your ballots. Everybody should have gotten a ballot in the mail. If you haven't, you can still show up to any polling place with, throughout the county. It doesn't have to be in your neighborhood. And you can vote, you can register to vote on spot and vote. Obviously, you know, I find voting a very important process in our country. For me, it's like the Super Bowl. It's so exciting. I, I can't wait to see, you know, what the results are on March 5. I'm going to be out of the country looking at the results next week. And, and it's just, it's just such a powerful thing that we have the ability to decide who our judges are in our community and decide who our representatives are in our community. And I don't take that lightly. And I definitely, I want to encourage you to encourage everybody you know to, to vote now or on March 5. I want to commend our, our finance department. On our agenda, I think it was item number nine, we had accepted our annual comprehensive financial report. And I was kind of like thumbing through it a little bit and I saw that there was some recognition for that department. Our, our report was, was awarded the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the sixth consecutive year. And so I want to congratulate you for that. It's awesome, it's a big deal. You know, making sure that we, you know, we handle, handle our money is important, but equally is important making sure we account for it properly and, and report it in a clean way, in a, in a understandable way, in a way that allows us to make good decisions. Also, in there, of course, I have to look and see how much money did we earn on our money last fiscal year? Because I used to be in that department. And the city earned $1.4 million on our money and property in the last fiscal year. So I, I definitely want to commend our city treasurer for her contribution to that, that result as well. So congratulations. And that's it. I look forward to seeing you guys next council meeting. If I see you before then, come say hi. Make sure you vote, make sure you come out and participate in all the great events we have in our community. And continue to make your voices heard.
How's our workshop, tax workshop going? Do you know? Okay. No, ours, we have one too.
Okay, it doesn't start till this month.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. March, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Let me just first thank today's groundbreaking. We had an alley improvement project, capital project. We've had two in the last week. I think we had one last week and we had one today. So thank you again to all of our department heads, especially our engineers, those that are applying for grants, our workforce and the public works department and all of those that came out to both. And look forward to additional improvements. Improvements regard not only our street improvements, sidewalks, ADA compliance, mobility, just across the board. And makes me proud to see how we continue to make improvements and provide safety to all of our community. Would also like to recognize our planning department, Greg McLean, for his February 21 ice cream social. So he had an opportunity to come down and have some ice cream. That was great, everybody loved it. There was great participation by, by our staff here at city hall and ice cream was great. So thank you for that. I look forward to the upcoming Employee Appreciation Day at city hall in our lobby at 2 PM, which is going to be another ice cream social. Can't get enough of ice cream, so look forward to that. Thank you for those that reported out today. We heard from El Camino College Board Member Nilo Michelin with regards to what's happening at our college community. Thank you for that. There's also a couple of announcements. I know I'm missing something. I know I'm participating in something. But anyhow, there's a Hawthorne Job Fair Expo that Katrina talked about on March 14. We also have the community cleanup Saturday, March 16. This is one very popular. There's always constituents calling and asking, when's the next paper shredding? So this is a great opportunity for paper shredding, bulky items and e-waste collection. That's going to be Saturday, March 16 from 8 to 1 PM. And then look forward again to Earth Day Celebration and Service Provider Fair with Councilmember Montero, myself, and our council members and mayor, Saturday, April 20. It's collaborative with Earth Day Celebration and Service Provider Fair. If you attended last year, it was a great event. There was a lot of people dancing. I had a good time. That was wonderful. And then there's going to be also Bunny Bonanza Celebration Saturday, March 23 from 10 to 2. Look forward to that. I know I'm missing something else.
I can help you.
Yes, I know.
Okay, got it.
So I remembered. Having a moment, but anyway. The, the Valentine's Love Our Seniors event. And so take a look at what happened on Valentine's Day at our Hawthorne Memorial Center with our seniors. And great event. Take a look, okay. It was a great event. We had all of our seniors from our senior center come out. There was dancing, there was food, there was vendors, and that was very special. There was roughly about, I want to say over 10 vendors that came and provided services to our seniors. My forehead is ashes, I have ashes. I went to church that day and I am fasting and I actually like it at this point. But that's the little black spot on my head. And then what else? We had our Director of Senior Services, we had our Community Services, we had all these vendors. Let me tell you, our seniors loved it. The Bellboas were there, thank you for coming. It was great fun. We danced, we ate, and we, more importantly, went to some of these vendors that were there providing services and everybody walked away with great information. And I look forward to that even, even more with regards to bringing them for our Service Provider Fair. There's, there's great support there. But yeah, it was a great event and thank you to those that helped. And Vaughn for, for approving and giving us the opportunity to do this. And all of our department at Brecken Parks and Community Services. So thank you for that. Let's see, what else? Thank you for the presentation with regards to our new city yard. I look forward to that. I love that we're moving forward with it and our city yard is going to be implemented soon. I also want to just make mention of our city charter. As Councilmember Montero mentioned, there's lots of great aspects to why we could benefit from being a charter city. And that's something that I want to see how we could ultimately leverage that and look at all the good that it could provide us in moving our city forward with regards to all the great developments and things that we want to do. But yeah, I, I know there's going to be more discussion on that. But thank you for all of your participation, for you coming out. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, everybody's good? All right. So folks, I took a little break, went down to Mexico City, did some vaca, like five days worth of relaxing over there. So I just needed a little break. I was kind of just have a lot of, had a lot of things. And I was thinking about you guys over there, so. Kept in constant communication with our city staff, our city police chief and our city manager and city attorney and some of my colleagues here on the council. So the city was still moving and its machine was still, you know, moving forward. So I'm really grateful that we have a great staff. And I just wanted to comment, I know that there's a lot of references to Inglewood and Carson. And I think that those references keep getting made up here on the council. And so I think I heard somebody today say something that we're a stepchild to those cities. We're nobody's stepchild. Look at our city, look how wonderful it is. Look at our streets, look at the infrastructure that we have. Our potholes are, you know, taken care of if there are any. First of all, we pave our streets correctly, so we, we have limited amount of potholes, you know? We have a good, steady, solid, strong economy, guys. But we keep referring to Inglewood and calling ourselves a stepchild to what their accomplishments are. And that's, I think that's a, that's a, that's an improper thing to do. And I'll give you an example. If you look at, I have a couple of friends in both cities that are trying to hold things together because of the misdoings of people in both, in both the city of Carson and in the city of Inglewood. And that's been due to the fact that they've been turning into, that they are charters. I want to, I want to remind, exactly. Well, you saw over here that they highlighted Carson. I know, I think one of our elected officials here works for the city of Carson, so I'm kind of curious why that was highlighted. But we keep referring to Inglewood and their successes. Everybody talks about the stadium and all this other stuff. Oh, you know, we don't have any, we don't have anything going on. Again, that's an insult to our city manager, our city attorney and our staff. That's just total, that's a total lie. Look at all the successes. We have SpaceX, we have Tesla, we have, we have stable tax revenue coming in. And why do I say that? Because right now, the city of Inglewood is going through their budget hearings, looking over how they performed last year. And they're doing poorly. They have, in part of their report, they saying tough times are ahead. Tough times are ahead for Inglewood that everybody keeps here referring to and saying that they're so successful and that somebody, some group, city that we have to look up to. Tough times are ahead. They've, they've had a 90%, you know how you go into the SoFi and to the forum? You know, into all the concerts that they have there? There's something called it admissions tax. Well, in the first two, the last two quarters, their admission tax went down 90%. We're talking millions of dollars and a decrease in the 90% range. Other areas, some taxes, I think there's a certain sector of their taxes that went down almost 50% from 16.8 million dollars to 8.1 million dollars. That doesn't happen here in the city of Hawthorne. So I think we need to stop looking and referring to those. I, I see my council member colleague, I think that's a pretty disrespectful that you're kind of snickering and laughing. Councilmember David Patterson, I ask that you stop that. Okay? Please. I can hear you from over here and people out there are looking at you. Hey, my apologies. Yeah, no, that's fine. And again, I ask that the city council, the residents not be fooled with this whole charter talk. And again, you guys voted it down 61% to 39%. You keep having people up here trying to convince you that you made an incorrect mistake. Well, the city's doing fine, there's no need to change anything. And we don't have a group of people that are coming to the podium asking for this. You guys are not the originators of this. It's the city council. In fact, it's one member of our city council that keeps bringing it up over and over and over and over. And you guys know what it is, you just don't say anything. But you guys, everybody's watches and sees who it is. Okay? So I don't know what the impetus is, etc., but I don't, it's not a good thing for the city. We're wasting taxpayers' money. This gentleman probably was paid to be here to speak. Putting it on the ballot costs money and it's not going to succeed. So it's just, what's that, what did Albert Einstein said? The definition of insanity is doing things over and over again, right? That aren't successful, so. I'm against charter and I'm going to join the residents of Hawthorne opposing it. All right? So today, we're going to end the council meeting on a more, not somber note, but a more thoughtful moment, thinking about Julia Jones, who is the mother of Renita Jones Richardson. Renita Jones Richardson is the wife of Bishop John Richardson from New Journey Ministries. And so we would like to close out the meeting in honor of her. She just passed recently, so let's just bow our heads and pray for her. her. All right. May she rest in peace. Let's... It's the mother, yeah, of Julia, of Renita Jones Richardson, yeah.
Mother Jones.
Yeah, it's the mother-in-law of Bishop John Richardson. Okay? So this meeting is adjourned at 8:31 PM.